We have one for each of you to have a look at and to keep. And it's banned. So there you go.
What's the street value of one of these?
Uh, twenty something bucks.
Look at the pictures.
We did kind of a, um, we didn't do a massive run of print copies because if you might recall, we did the flash drives that we'll put them on to hand them out.
Right.
And then this is a PDF. I'm not sure if it's up on the website yet, town website, but it will be.
Too bad I don't have a kid that needs a high chair.
This is very nice.
Our past commissioners who worked on it.
Okay, any other announcements?
Who printed this?
Springfield Printing, I think was the...
No, 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 no.
So it's Brattleboro over mine.
Yeah, it was Minut- was it Minuteman?
It was Minuteman.
Oh, they're nice.
Yeah, it was Minuteman that did it and, um...
Nice picture.
We worked with Amy Walters, who was the graphic designer, and Julia in our office was amazing.
Yeah.
Kind of became...
It's a good announcement.
Yeah, it's a good announcement. Yeah, we're very, it wouldn't have been possible without Julia or Amy, but we're really, really pleased. So, great.
You're here, Julia.
Yeah.
She also does a great job of our minutes.
Yep.
Yep.
She probably smiles when she's on this. Okay, there's no public comments. I'm just gonna gloss over that tonight. Zoning ordinance rewrite is going to be shuffled. It's gonna go from E to F on subdivision regulations. It's gonna go from F to E. E to. Uh, so with that in mind.
What's it gonna be?
We're gonna switch around.
We're just flip flopping zoning ordinance.
E and F?
Yeah.
Yep.
I do note that one member of the public has arrived just about thirty seconds after we closed public comment. Did you come here intending to make public comment?
About something not on the agenda.
Joe Public?
I, I came here for entertainment.
Okay.
Oh, excellent.
Well, we'll do our best.
Would you mind if I faced your committee as you don't have a normal arrangement?
No, no, no.
Rather than sitting behind you.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to drag up a chatroom or something or?
You can sit at the select board table.
But you don't want to speak right now at least. Okay.
So we're just gonna do, when Isabel gets to it, we're gonna switch chairs with you, Tim. So, Tim, this is Isabel. Isabel McGlocklin, this is...
Yeah, we met previously the other day.
Good.
I haven't met.
Oh.
Is- Isabel?
Thank you.
This is Carol Lee. We're gonna, yeah.
Maybe I met in passing on the street.
And this is, and this is Markeith here and members of the planning commission. So...
Yeah, sorry, Isabel.
Yeah.
Um, anyhow, let's get...
So she's the, an intern?
She is our intern, yeah.
Let's get to subdivision regulations. Are you guys gonna...
All right. I mean, yeah, first, um, I'll start with a little overview of how it's different from the last time you saw it, last month. And then we're gonna talk about some of the modeling that Isabel has been working on and then, you know, just to have discussion. And then to close it up, I wanna, you know, kinda see where we're at and talk about how we're gonna get this out to the public for, um, educational purposes and feedback and whatnot. So, a couple of changes from the last time around. I reformatted the tables on pages twelve and thirteen. Those are the tables that have to do with determining the buildable area and then setting the development density. Hopefully, they're a little bit easier to read than they were the last time around.
Three point two?
Mm-hmm. Three point two, three point one and three point two.
Okay.
They're a little different, um, kind of the same concepts. In table three point two, we had had a different, um, development factor for whether or not it was adjacent to the watershed lands. I took that out based on kind of preliminary, looking at the types of roads that were around it. And then I also made table three point two so that it wasn't cumulative. It's kind of if you, you take the most restrictive as, as the density factor.
That's what we talked about first.
Yeah. We did. We had talked about incentives in July and I did a table of incentives, table three point three on page fourteen. Those were just some, you know, there's certainly more incentives that we can have. The idea here is that you would set the base number of units based on table three point one and three point two. And then depending on the development, you could get these incentives on the, um, number of lots or units. I made some changes in section three point five, which has to do with the roads and driveways and access. In this one, I really went back and forth on this. Public Works had an opportunity to look at the regulations and they had made some comments. I got rid of some areas that were inconsistent with things that we, or documents that we cited. What I would say is that Brattleboro has, we have road and bridge construction standards, but we don't have any design standards. So the construction standards have to do with how big is the culvert, how many inches of gravel, this and that.
Design standards for bridges and roads?
We have construction standards. We don't have design...
Not design standards.
Yeah. We don't have design standards that deal with like right-of-way width, travel lane, uh, shoulders, sidewalks, that kind of thing.
Should we?
Most towns do, yeah. And so what I did is try to bring in kind of some of the state best practice. I would say our subdivision regulations have them now. Some of them are pretty outdated. So we were finding that the lane widths were pretty wide. But I guess what I, what I was trying to say is that a lot of towns have them adopted separately. So because, you know, the select board has adopted it based on Public Works recommendations and that kind of thing. Brattleboro only has them in their, in the current subdivision regulations and we know they're really outdated. So, um, I looked at what a lot of towns are using, what the state documents provide for guidance and have gone with that as the recommendation. I do need to have Public Works have another look at this.
Is this section, um, I was trying to, I didn't have time to go through the whole thing and compare. Is this, um, section three point five substantially longer than in the past?
Not in the last, not substantially longer than the last draft that you saw. I would say, um, based on some feedback from Public Works, you know, it modified the sidewalk language. They would prefer to have five-foot wide sidewalks, um, with a five-foot green strip. And usually just on one side of the street, so kind of incorporated language, but, you know...
So this section three point five is now the road design standards? You're not contemplating something...
I can't hear you.
Attached?
No.
A separate thing?
No.
Hey, can you read my notes? Okay, so this is it?
No, this would be the road design standards, yeah. And then the only other thing I'd point out is that this would apply to both public and private roads. The person I was speaking to in Public Works liked that, but I'm not sure if that's kind of unanimous or the best thing to do. It, you know, other towns will have road design standards and construction standards for public and then another set for private. So it's kind of a place where I feel...
Private roads are usually smaller, aren't they?
Private?
Private roads and sometimes just leading to one or two, uh, maybe just a couple.
I mean, Hillwind started out as a private road, didn't it?
Right. The, the history of private road construction in Brattleboro is that they're generally constructed to meet the town construction standards so that at any point in the future, they can be taken up as a public road. And so that's the history for the most part. And Brattleboro is, I'm not sure what the right word is, but historically, again, the town has been open to taking up roads. Whereas other communities can be much more rigid and say, if it starts off as a private road, it's pretty much gonna stay a private road.
Oh, wow. Really?
And there are some towns, namely kind of resort towns, that point blank don't, haven't taken up a road since like nineteen seventy-four. So, um, which means that, you know, more than two-thirds of the paved length of roads in that town are private. So...
And have to be maintained privately.
Yeah, but in a resort setting, that might not be the same kind of onerous problem that it would be.
Like in a town like Brattleboro.
Here. So, so what I'd say is that we've been pretty permissive or relaxed about taking up roads, but then fairly adamant about roads being built to town specifications.
Was that like the case in the past, like at Carriage Hill? Was that, was all private at one point? And then when the develop, develop, or didn't have enough funds to finish the town, had to take that over at great expense?
I'm not sure about the example of Carriage Hill.
Yeah.
But I think that over time, the town has become more, um, sort of serious about the need for the developer to show that the road meets town specifications and then it can be taken up.
Yeah, okay.
How could this apply to a public road? What sort of situation would that occur?
Well, it's conceivable that the, that the town could be in a situation where it's willing to actually, you know, build a road. And so it would govern, so this, this regula, these regulations would govern their, the town's own, you know, act, actions in that regard. I would say, again, historically, Brattleboro, like most of the towns in northern New England, is not really in the business of starting that up or, or having an arrangement with the developer so that the town is the one that puts the road in from the beginning. Usually, it's the developer that, that builds the road.
Well, I also think of it, I, I think I was thinking of it a little bit more loosely. So sometimes, you know, a subdivision won't come before the board and everybody knows the intent is that they want the town to take it over. And so, you know, it's kind of agreed on at some point in the process, but it would, would have to be built to the standards.
I think, I think the issue that we're trying to drive at is, we think that construction standards are really important, but we also think that the design is really important. And, and for the most part, I think it's fair to say that we paid attention to construction standards and not the design of the road in terms of who's using the road and for what purpose and how it meets the, the needs of the road users. So in other words, we get slot, we get, we get sort of a one-size-fits-all kind of road outcome. We get, um, roads that are bigger than they probably need to be, um, with serious curbing. You know, they're very formal suburban-style kinds of roads. And we think that there might be more room for flexibility in design.
It's not the concept, like, question. I just didn't realize we had the, the authority.
Well, I think you can certainly encode design standards for roads in the subdivision regulations because the process of subdivision actually is, you know, once you're over, once you're into sort of a major subdivision, really what you're creating is lots that have frontage as a consequence of making a road. So if you can't stipulate what you want in a road in the subdivision regulations, then I think that's kind of a serious problem.
Oh, no, I understand that. But aren't you saying that if the town decided they wanted to put a new road in wherever, that these would govern the design of that road? I'm asking if you're sure we can do that. I, I, I don't disagree, you know, with subdivision context.
Well, didn't you say that the select board has this other role as the town road committee?
The, yeah, the director of Public Works has the role of being the road commissioner. And then he, and then he reports directly to the select board in that capacity. And the select board makes a decision. So I think even in the instance of taking up roads or, um, other aspects of maintaining and managing the road system, the select board is the, is the body.
It convenes as road commissioners, especially at their meeting.
Right.
Or liquor commissioners or whatever it is.
I can certainly, certainly speak to Public Works about that. I mean, you know, I don't know when they last created a road, but, the standards that we reference are kind of typical, the typical ones for Vermont.
I have no beef with it. I just, by the time we vote, we wanna know exactly what it'll apply to. You know, so we know what, what's on the line, what's on the table.
So these are still cons, cons, um, all these things in section three point five are still construction?
No, they're, they're more designed.
Now more designed.
They're now more designed. Okay.
Right, say, you know, stipulating that the travel lanes or, um, the stop.
I mean, you, you use that as item B, but I just, I'm confused by your conversation. That's, that's all. I'm, I'm still learning, I guess, what you're talking about.
Roads are confusing.
I'm assuming what we have is something like, it has to be five-inch gravel, six-inch concrete.
Right, those are the, that's all we have, yes.
Right now, we have the kinds of specifications that the contract is gonna use to estimate the materials and then build the road. What we don't have is instructions for the person laying out the subdivision as to the appearance and the shape and form of the road.
Well, we do have that in our existing subdivision regulations. These are just, I would say, more up-to-date and more, um, contemporary.
So what we, we have language that basically says, build a, build a road to town specifications. And then we have widths and other attributes.
Like including the, the five-foot green strip with sidewalks and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if somebody was building, I can think of like, say, a small subdivision where, again, it's more like a lollipop. The road kind of goes in around and comes back out again. Not being a through street, would that still have to have sidewalks and all that like that? Or is that something that the developer could go to the DRB and ask for a variance on that? Because I can see that kind of road, people just walking in the road because it's, it's a quiet...
Right.
Very quiet road and, and, I mean, sidewalks aren't cheap.
It's a good question. I mean, I, you know, the town hasn't gone through some process that I'm aware of that says in these zoning districts or in these areas, we want sidewalks. So I wrote the language saying that we may require sidewalks on at least one side.
Yeah.
You know, I think in order to say you need to have it, it, I don't know. I mean, it, to me, it's pretty clear. If you're doing a subdivision in the residential areas, yeah, you probably should be providing it. If you're doing it out in the rural zone, you know, maybe in the right subdivision, it makes sense to have a little walking path as opposed to a curb side. You know, I think there's lots of variations, so I didn't want to...
Yeah, I realized you said may require, so.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen some that will do it based on density of the development, but...
With the number, just the number of units and the number of properties being accessed by the road.
Yeah.
So the concerns that you have to balance off are, emergency services want access to the property, that, I mean, you know, at any time. And then the residents and/or, you know, if it's a residential subdivision that we're discussing here, residents and others want, you know, minimal impact from the road and, you know, as much kind of shared use as, as can be managed. So there's this sort of trade-off between meeting the expectations of emergency services versus the residents. It can be done. There's various designs that are out there, um, that are a lot more flexible, including, you know, relatively long sections of street that are effectively one travel lane width wide and one car gives way to the other for each section. And you can have, you can signpost it so that it's shared, shared use, you know, with...
It's more in a rural area, usually.
Well, you know, or a quiet residential setting, you know. If it's a, if it's a street that's not a through street and you know where it is in the hierarchy, you can have, you know, shared use.
Actually, some people use that as traffic calming too, don't they?
Yes, exactly.
Yep, yep.
Children make great traffic calming devices. So, um...
They've done that. I lived in Brattleboro for a while and they did that.
So, so those, there are all these various approaches.
Yeah.
And there's the whole kind of, um, traffic calming-inspired, uh, approach to road design that, um, basically downgrades the function of the car and increases the, um, resources dedicated to pedestrians and cyclists. So there's all sorts of variations that we haven't really experimented with in Brattleboro very much around that.
And as you speak that, it makes me realize there's nothing that I saw when I read through this that allows for bike lanes or cyclists in this section, three point five. Is that, am I, did I miss it somewhere or?
No.
Since we have sidewalks for pedestrians.
Three point five, B, two. It's in the parentheses, the last sentence, B, two.
B?
Yeah, shared use of bicycles is the last phrase in that.
To accommodate.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could, we could add something on, um, you know, some shared use path or, or bike lane. I mean, I think in a residential subdivision, you're not necessarily gonna put a bike lane in.
Yeah, and that's right, this is, yes, yeah.
And, and, and appropriately.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Kind of got you off track. Were there any other big things you wanted to call out?
Um, a little, some change to the stormwater management and erosion control standards. It's still, um, it refers to a lot of guides, but it still is kind of going after the low-impact development design principles. And then the only other one would be, um, section three point ten, open space and common land, has been shortened, I would say, um, because we were, the other, the, the previous version was really focusing on conservation subdivisions and we've moved away from that. So those are key points that I wanted to highlight. And then I guess if you're ready to move on, we'll get back to the feature-based density and how in the rural and the rural residential, right now, we're proposing to do a way with minimum lot size and setting the density for the parcels based on the, um, a combination of looking at the buildable area on the site as well as looking at the features. And then right now, it's based on road access and water and sewer. And with that, Isabel has been doing a lot of work so that we can begin to visualize what this looks like and understand how it would affect, um, different parcels. So, Isabel, speak to it.
Do you want to hand over the chair?
Okay.
Are you writing on screen?
I'm on the screen.
Yes.
Don't you like the back of my head?
It's high resolution.
VCTV. Hi there. Getting an evil look. Mr. Chair, do we get an opportunity to comment as a public at various points in time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would you like to, before she gets started?
I was just gonna make one comment about the road thing, and that is...
Identify yourself. I know you're well-known in these parts, but...
I'm well-known in these parts.
No, you can, you can, you can do this one.
I just wanted you to say who you were, so that...
Okay. Tim Cuffin. Rest in Brattleboro. I, I noticed that the, the language in there relating to driveways, which would be, um, let's call it small roads serving small numbers of lots.
Up to three lots.
Up to three.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that the DRB has struggled with is that up to three is inadequate because we do have a number of instances where we have four or five lots that come off in rural areas off of farm roads. And I would encourage that the number of lots not be limited to three. For a driveway and that the definition of driveway may requ, I haven't gone to the end of the subdivision regulation, but the definition of driveway may, may, may need further clarification.
Can I just under, just clarify? So you think that there should be more homes than just three that can be off in the driveway? It's, you can pick up.
Yes, okay.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I don't think it should necessarily be limited to three lots.
Okay.
I think it's, it's much more circumstantially based. I mean, I personally, in West Brattleboro, own land, which is off a farm road, which has four lots off it. So I consider that a driveway. It's not a public road, it's a private road. It's, it's a, it's a, um, gravel road, you know, and it doesn't, clearly doesn't need a cycle walk because everybody, you know. There's all those things that it wouldn't have to be built to, but it has, there's four dwellings off it. And there are other situations where the DRB has allowed more than three before, three being the existing language.
All right.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Is there a potential downside to doing that?
Nine-one-one number?
Nine-one-one numbering is that, and it's kind of a clincher there.
Sorry?
Nine-one, nine-one-one numbering, there's kind of a...
Nine-one-one numbers quite happily, just on distance off of the main street. I mean, you're, you're nine fifteen, you're nine forty-seven, you're nine sixty-five, you're nine eighty-one, whatever you are. Nine-one-one numbering works fine.
I think you need to, you need to name the road at that point.
The town happily names the roads, all those roads. They do it all the time, like buttoned drives.
So is it a private road or is it a driveway?
It just says, well, it's, well, that's where we have a definitional issue, which is I was referring to.
I made, I made a note that there's a definitional, definitional issue...
Let me ask you this one.
With driveway versus private road.
What might be the problem that you think might exist?
Nine-one-one numbering and the naming of the, of the driveway slash road could be an issue. And then the other part about it is, is that, um...
Standards.
The standards question. So the, the quality of construction and its possibility in, in bad weather, so...
And acts emergency access.
Emergency, for emergency access. So the issue that would come, that would come back to us is that a, you know, that an incident occurred and emergency service personnel weren't able to access the property in a timely way because the, you know, there was, you know, four houses, four or more houses off a driveway and the driveway was in poor condition and it was bad weather and they couldn't access it. That's the kind of issue that would come up. So, you know, private road is one thing in terms of who's gonna maintain it and there's an agreement that, that's, that governs the subdivision and people are, you know, putting money in escrow or whatever. There's a, there's a plan in place that means that the road is maintained. But you can have also, you know, there are examples in town where you can have three or more properties accessing a driveway which is, you know, eleven hundred feet long. And in each driveway off of that, accessing each of the private homes is upwards of seven hundred feet long. So if you're in an ambulance and it's uphill the whole way and it's icy, you're talking, you know, almost two thousand feet of road that's really substandard. And then you gotta get back down again. So, you know, emergency service personnel have got a serious issue with this kind of stuff. And it's just a question of who gets to intervene and at what point to get to intervene and so...
And then somebody could sue because you didn't get there soon enough and...
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, yeah, there's a, there's a whole bunch of questions that, that push back from them.
I hope you're not interfering.
We sue.
I don't think she is interfering.
Just let me just make a quick question.
Go ahead.
I'll give you, um, I just wanna understand the nine-one-one number issue because I, I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, you're assigned a nine-one-one number.
Yeah.
And it's a function that the town undertakes. And so the, the numbering system and the naming system has to work. So you can't, at some point, you can't have more than four, you know, I think the, I think the requirement is three homes off a driveway because it's, doesn't give adequate clarity, again, to the emergency service personnel that what they want is a number with, a house with this number. So twenty-seven dash three, um, you know, Somerset Lane, right?
Yeah.
If it gets much more than that, they're like, which damn house is it? There's somebody having a heart attack and I can't tell which one it is.
Is this the kind of thing we can check for sure and know the next meeting?
We can sit down with the emergency personnel and see what they have to say. But I think it's after three, they end up naming it. So then it's kind of a private road and then...
I think it's less than three. I think it's landed two. As soon as you go beyond one, it's named. I was asked to name beyond one. As soon as the second building lot was defined, sorry?
I, I was just making a joke, sorry.
I missed the joke.
I did, sir. I didn't probably say it.
The sys, the system, as it, as it worked or occurred for me, as a landowner, as I purchased some land, it was on a common drive, as soon as the building lot was defined, I was asked, because it then meant there was two properties hanging off the same road. We were asked by the town to name the road.
Right.
Okay. And then nine-one-one then came in and said, well, you're no longer, whatever you were, Abbott Road, you are now your new road.
Yes.
And by the way, this is your new numbers because we've measured the distance off the highway and you are now, even though there's only one house on there, you're now one thousand one hundred and twenty-five because that's how many feet you are from the arterial road.
Right.
And then the third property went in and got named accordingly and we are on a, and then the fourth one's, we're, we're on a driveway.
Right, so that's how to do it.
So the system, the system kind of worked, as far as I'm concerned, as it stands right now. Whether, if we had fifty houses going in there, different proposition, but three, four... Whether, if we had fifty houses going in there, different proposition, but three, four, so I'm just suggesting that three is potentially restrictive.
The question becomes who's, I mean, so now I would say that what Tim is living on, in our mind, is, well, what, where, where Tim, where Tim's road is, is now not a driveway, it's a private road.
Okay.
So then the question becomes...
Did it get upgraded?
Did it get upgraded to meet the standards of a private road versus a driveway?
Let's hear from emergency services personnel next time.
They won't come.
You're also...
Yeah.
They've got emergencies.
We'll report to you. Okay.
Sorry about that.
So I'm gonna give you a little bit of the visualization of the GIS shapefile, which is the way, the term for how you visualize a layer in ArcGIS. And so you'll see the shapefile and then the table that's associated with it that has all this information that we've been talking about to help determine the maximum density and the determination of buildable or developable area. So here, um, is the table that shows the proposed driveway or development road. Access information for each parcel. It's kind of small, but, so it has the zoning district, the GIS ID, which is like the tax ID. Um, the address, any alternate addresses, so if a parcel has more than one address, if it's, you know, um...
Like an alias?
Yes, or multi-family unit. Um, and then there's three different types of road type categories.
Well, what is this, this, is it a town list?
So it's all the parcels that are, um, rural and rural residential, classified that way.
So you're just seeing a screenshot here.
Yeah, just so you'll see what...
How we built it.
What it is. So the three different road types based on the table that Sue was talking about. You have paved class-three roads, gravel class-three roads, private roads or class-four roads. Those are the only ones you'll see in rural and rural residential. There, um, I haven't found any state highway or, or class-two roads. So that'll determine how many units you're talking about. Um, any questions more on this slide?
I'm just curious, do we really have no class-two roads in rural and rural residential? Is that weird?
Is it weird? Not really. Not given, I mean, I think it's mostly class-three paved or gravel.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Karen.
Press that red narrow button.
Cool. Yeah. So...
Mostly the class-two roads were in the other zoning districts.
Right.
Um, this is a, just a, a larger version of the spreadsheet you saw before, here are the road types. And next, you have the, if it's next to public water supply or not, only one of these examples is. And then if these parcels have access to town sewer or town water, which means are they on the, are they already hooked up? Like, is the pipe in their, within their parcel or if they're within about a hundred feet so that they can easily be added on to the system?
Is this all, is each line an actual parcel that exists in our town? Oh.
Yes, yes. So this is, so imagine this is a spreadsheet and every, every parcel's identified in the spreadsheet. And then the software translates what, what, that table
Into the map.
and turns it into the map.
Yeah, but I just wasn't
Yeah.
sure what the table really was. That, so those are parcels of land that actually exist in this town so that we can really get...
In just two, in just two zoning districts, rural and rural residential.
Rural residential, yeah, but, um, yeah, sorry. So that we can really get a feel for how this is gonna apply.
Yep.
Okay. For, I mean, this would be, I mean, those plots of land could belong to, I mean, potentially, obviously, belong to somebody and we're looking...
They do.
They do.
Yeah.
Every one of these parcels do belong to somebody.
This is the geographic mapping system that town uses now. It's core data, it's the database that everything's built on.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's not, this is not a...
This is real.
No, 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 I know it's really for here, but I'm just trying to clarify what it is. And so then you're creating all these different categories
Yep.
Yep.
across that forms the table, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, so I took all the different, um, layers that the town database has and just joined them all together so that each time there was a, you know, the sewer pipe went under this parcel, it's joined to that. So when you look at this parcel database and you can see it on the map and you can see a table of it, you could click on your parcel and see my parcel has these types of roads that are accessed to it as water, sewer, or not.
That's great.
And then, so then further, and then that, we're gonna look at the buildable area based on, um, physical features, slope, a hundred-year floodplain, wetlands, surface waters.
Wow.
And then the setback from the wetland and the surface water, which is fifty feet. So based on the table that Sue had, it's three point two.
Three point one.
Three point one?
Yeah, it got changed.
Okay. Um, it's the same parcels you saw before, but just the different information for each, so, um, so this is the, uh, acreage for each parcel. Then you have what I'm calling the union, which means like added altogether of the slope, water, flood, and wetlands. So all the acres that for each parcel has that are in those categories, slope being high slopes, anything over twenty-five. And then, um, this is where it gets a little tricky. Then you, so all those elements have the same development area adjustment, which is nothing you can't develop on those areas. But the setback area, the fifty feet from wetlands and, and surface water, has a fifty percent credit. So you can develop on half of the area that is there. Um, so, um, why don't I show the picture? Because, so I'll show you an example parcel, but so that's the, you have the setback, you have the, then you have the development credit applied to that. And then, and then eventually you have the developable acres. So here's an example of a parcel that's kind of outlined in this turquoise color. Um, I'm just gonna go up there, point things out. So here's our, you know, area.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this is just one example parcel. So we kind of modeled it in two different ways, a more restrictive and a less restrictive way. Um, the tricky part and the restrictive part of it is the...
Could you do, excuse me, I'm sorry, could you just use your pointer there to do the, all the boundaries? Because I'm not clear, I can see it from here. I can see some of them, so it goes there.
It goes like this, it's a funny shaped thing.
Oh, 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 way down there.
Am I reading correctly that that's seventeen acres?
That is seventeen, um, buildable or developable acres.
Oh, what's the...
The total acres is forty-five point nine three.
And is that the road down at the bottom?
Yep.
Okay.
Why don't you go over what the other things in the legend are?
Okay, so the road is here, it's in black. Then the purple little things are buildings that are existing already. All the area in red is the union area of slope, high slopes, um, surface water, flood, and wetlands. This area in green is the fifty-foot setback from wetlands and surface waters. And this sort of muddy, ugly color is the overlap between the, a high slope and water and all that, and the setback. So the reason that's highlighted, because if you took all that information and subtracted it out from the main, um, parcel acres, you'd end up with a negative number, because it would subtract twice. So, um, we did sort of two models. The overlap area, if it was subtracted out from the union area, it's more restrictive because, um, let's see.
It's double counting?
Yes.
Yeah, so you don't want it double counted. So I either subtracted it from the union area so that it's not counted in this stuff, so, um, it's counted as just the, in the setback, so you can develop half of that area. If you don't count that, you could remove it from the setback. And so you have less area that you can develop half on again.
Right.
It's, it's a bit confusing, but...
Usually in that, not as confusing, but so, the point is, is that the white space is where you can develop. And in the green space, you can develop half of that land.
Let me just rephrase that a little bit. The white space is what we consider to be the developable area. So the gross parcel was forty-five acres, but what we're saying in these regulations is we don't want people to think of their gross acreage, we want a realistic look of what can be subdivided. So we've taken out the, um, those features that we're saying, you know, really you can develop on, those steep slopes. Surface waters, steep slopes, um, we've included floodplains.
What's your top for that, like net area or something?
Right, so then it leaves you, it leaves the net developable area.
Right.
Okay.
Which is that white area.
Could you put your road through the red if you wanted to?
We had this conversation earlier today, and that's one of the issues that we need to resolve in terms of sort of the idea of rulemaking. Um, so when Isabel and Sue and I were talking about it today, you could have one standpoint that said the white area, if I'm the developer, once I've established what the white area is, which is the net developable area, that to me is the land that I can sell to a property owner. So I wanna maximize that. And therefore I want the shared services like roads and so forth, or any kind of, um, easement that you might need to impose to service it with, uh, say, power lines or something to happen over the conservation land. The question comes for us and the planning commission, and that is, in broad terms, if you're looking at red or green, what you're looking at is area that's been set aside from development because it either is fragile or it has environmental values that you wanna protect or it's, um, it introduces risks. So for instance, if it's red, it could, it's highly likely that it's a steep slope, which means that it's unsuitable for the location of a road. So the flattest land that's most suited to development, including the, I love this term, the appurtenances that go with it, which would include a road, happens in the white area. The question would be the setback question, that kind of lime-green, um, bagel-shaped thing up there, right in the middle, whether you'd count the setback as an area that you could have a road or, um, services, you know, use.
Yeah, but if, let's say if it was wetland, there'd be instances where you could get a, I'm assuming that if it were wetland, and these are state classified wetlands.
Yeah, they're class two and above.
You could get a permit to cross a small section of that wetland, so it's not prohibited from development in terms of the state.
It's restricted, yeah.
If, if you get a permit to cross, have a road crossing, then you would think that the town would honor that same...
I, I think that, to that point and to Rod's, Rod's kind of point, I think there's nothing expressly prohibiting a road up the steep slope area or through the wetland, except for the fact that where, when you look at the design guidelines, we're at, you know, first of all, there's the road standards, so you can't have it at a grade greater than twelve percent. Or, you know, we want it, we don't want a lot of cut and fill, so we don't want you to blast out this steep slope area to put your road through. So I think if you can, you know, show that you're meeting the designs, um...
Stand, requirements of the...
Requirements in the subdivision regulations, starting in three point three and, and for roads, three point five. Um, you know, so I don't think, even to the wetlands, I don't think there's anything, I'd have to look through that expressly says you can't put a road through the wetland, you'd have to go get your state permit. You know, if it made the most sense.
That, that there's a logical way to put the road.
Yes.
And there's a small piece of wetland, that if the state would allow you to
Right.
develop it, so too should the town.
Yeah, and to, I mean, I, I think that's a reasonable point. I'd say anecdotally, the experience of people trying to get a wetland permit here for something like that is actually, and it's distinctly different from other jurisdictions and it's pretty hard to get one, um, to...
You know, like if it was a tenth of an acre or something like that.
Right, I mean, I can imagine, you, you could, you could, you know, to take that, um... He's calling me? He's calling you? Oh my God, is he calling me too?
Put your, try to put your chat to your volume down.
Who's calling?
Rod's son.
Oh.
Don't go there.
He's just trying to deflect the blame.
It's politics. Politics.
It is.
He's raising money too.
Yeah, you can bet.
Sorry. Sorry, that's... Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
We, we have very recently, as a DRB, had, had an application before us, which we approved, that kind of looks like this. It wasn't that big an amount of land. And there's lots of areas in town where you have a plateau.
Yep.
And, you know, Route thirty runs along the river, and then the roads go up either side of it. You know, up to Fox Hill on one side and Blackmouton on the other side, and something on the other side. And the, you want, you wanna build on the top, because it's gonna be white in this calculation. It's gonna be net buildable area. But then you have the access issue, which goes to your question just now, which is, how do I get my road up that steep bank and through the red area? Um, this happens to have the road attached to a white area directly, so you, one would assume that that would be your curb cut the way you got into your seventeen acres of developable land. If you, if you didn't have that and you had to go straight uphill, then it comes down to how you guide the road construction and the road grades and the road design to, to get access to that developable land. So I think that's what James is asking about, can you, or you posed the question, can I put my road through the red land? Would it not then be the question of the road standards define the, the placing of any road on a lot?
They, they don't, they don't deal with the placement of the road per se. What they do is restrict the design of the road, so they, they limit grade.
Yeah.
And they do, and turn radii and those kinds of things, so that they're accessible by large vehicles and so forth. And so, were you in, so when I'm looking at this picture and if I'm thinking that the red area is all kind of got some other set of conditions prevailing?
Sorry, I've gotta go.
Yeah, I, I know. I don't think he's there, don't worry about it. Um, so...
Lock them closer shut, it's now.
Yeah, really.
This is the youngest kid in the group. Hold it, hold it. Sorry, what's he doing?
I don't know what he's doing.
He's doing something.
Yeah, he's plotting. I don't want...
Goodbye, James.
Enjoy yourself, James, yeah. Um... I'm sorry, James must have been late or something, I don't know. Um, so that restrictive area sets up challenging conditions to put a road in and is in conflict with some of the design requirements that you'd have to follow road. Which mean, now, you know, depending on your determination and your resources, you could, you could propose, you know, if we didn't have any of these conservation, um, objectives prevailing, if you wanted to put in a, right now, if you wanted to put in a road in a very steep place in Brattleboro, and you needed to meet the twelve and a half percent grade requirement, you could blast in or fill your way to that number, right? And twelve and a half percent is pretty steep.
Oh, it's not, not pleasant, and we rarely, you know, we rarely like giving permits at that, at that level.
And you might give it for fifty feet or something, or a limited distance.
And even then, we argue.
Yeah, right.
Because it becomes stormwater management issues, and that, that becomes the, the significant portion of that.
Right, which is exactly what's feeding into this set of considerations. So to get, now that James has gone to answer his question. I really think that the road needs to go in the white zone, for want of a better term. And maybe it's a question about...
But if there was no white zone, let's just say that that red came all across the bottom and the main road, if I'm assuming it's the main road.
There'd have to be like hardship clause for some sort of relief for a certain portion of
Right.
Well, but, see, I feel like if I'm looking at this parcel and I was, you know, somebody came in to consult with me in the office, I would say start it in the white area. And then you'll have the most, you know, you'll meet the regulations the best because you'll have the least amount of impact. You know, if you're gonna start it way over in the red area and traverse it up the right-hand side of the parcel, well, you know, you're gonna have a hard time arguing that that's the most appropriate location.
I'm saying that if, for the, you know, for ninety-five percent of it, you can get it in the white, but there's a five percent that's in the red.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Then you should have some relief.
Mm-hmm.
But these, the language, I think, as it is now prohibits development... But these, the language, I think as it is now prohibits development in the red.
I think the language prohibits building envelopes in the red. I don't think it prevents roads in, in that respect.
Building envelopes, including appurtenances which include the road.
That's one, something that we have to clarify.
Because I think we did clarify the definition of building envelope.
It can include a driveway, but I don't believe, this gets back to Tim's point. A road or a driveway.
Yeah, yeah. Building envelopes are designed to, uh, principal and accessory structures, parking areas, and when appli, and when applicable, the well and septic systems, including tank and leach field. So, it doesn't include utilities and.
What does well applicable mean?
Did you caught that?
If you have a well and septic, then, if you have a well and septic, it should be within the building.
Well, no, but if you look at lots of land around here, the, 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 the well may not be, but the septic systems are quite often taken outside of the building envelope. Often.
We have a pretty big envelope, building envelope that we're allowing.
But it depends on what you're doing, you know, let's say you have a two acre, you have a seventeen acre net buildable land, then you have a two acre building envelope, for whatever reason. But the, but the, the septic field doesn't fit within that. The septic field could be fifteen hundred feet away, someplace else. And that is not a part of your building envelope. Believe me, the state doesn't view it that way. Neither does the tax maps, neither does cu, current use, neither does all of these things kind of fit into, you could, you can put it a long way away. So, I wouldn't, I'd go to, to Liz's point that there's some kind of loose, I don't know what you wanna call it, easement or forgiveness or?
Hardship.
Hard, yeah, well, maybe hardship, I'm not sure that's the correct word, but.
Relief.
Relief, yeah. The, the other thing to say is this, is that just, sorry, I'm sort of joining the planning commission.
That's alright.
Sorry.
That's why we said like this.
Is that, um, by the way, you know, if, if I was the, if I was the developer, landowner developer, I'm not gonna wanna put the road up through the hills if I can get it on the flat. Because it costs phenomenally.
Right.
And also, anyone that's lived here for more than one winter knows that, knows that, if you can have a flat road, boy, is are you in a smart situation for getting in and getting out, or not getting stuck. So, that, sort of, the geographic, uh, requirements of nature are very strong. It's just a situation where, if that was, I mean, that looks like, I don't know, that, I can't even imagine what that lot is. I mean, this, with the steep slopes going all the way out, it looks like there's a seventeen acre basin or hole in the middle of something. With a road running along the outside.
What it is, is, is.
Could be a granite pit.
Where is it?
I don't know.
I don't know where it is. But Isabel's keeping it a secret.
Well, yeah, the, the thing is, is that, there's another, there's another factor in terms of curb cart and lines of sight when you're coming up a property.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you may have something where you say, we really wanna calm fifty yards down and go through the red, because this is a very dangerous bend on the road and.
Right.
And, so there are hardship factors or
That's right.
Common sense factors that say
Right.
This is how we'll approach it.
So, under those circumstances, the one thing that we could contemplate is kind of an exchange. So, so in this instance, what we've done is we've done a map showing the features that we're trying to protect, or the hazard issues that we're attempting to avoid. And that's how you get up the pattern of red versus white. If somebody comes along and says, you know, I would confront a hardship accessing this parcel using that narrow white area where I could put in a driveway, because A, it's full of ledge, and would require blasting, and or B, it's on a bend, which it's not quite, but imagine it's on a bend, and it has poor sightlines. I wanna move it a hundred feet to the left, or the east, or whatever you wanna say. Um, then, y, you know, the response from the town could be, yeah, okay. And then, in return for that, we're gonna want the same area that you devote to the road access in the red area, add it on to a red area somewhere else on the parcel, so that the overall balance between red and white is maintained, right? You could do that. So, in other words, it's a swap. It's not a, um, just a, you know, not, yeah, not a gift, or, you know, it's, it's a trade. And then, then to get back to the question of septic leach fields and so forth, I think, to some extent, I understand where, um, where Tim is coming from, and I think it's commonplace for people to run, at least run leach fields. You know, sometimes they're over the road, there's all sorts of crazy solutions to septic systems. I think my favorite one is over the road and pumped uphill to somebody else's leach field, which, you know, is a fairly absurd outcome. Um, 'cause, you know, actually, if the pump fails, guess what happens to you? It all comes back. Um, so.
That's controlled by the state, though.
Yeah, it is controlled by the state. But what I'd say is that we're actually trying to achieve something else here, which is to say, if we're talking about fairly open lands, like a meadow or something, and you want the leach field six hundred feet down the meadow away from your property, and it already is a meadow, then my view on that would be, I don't see that as being a big issue. But if you're gonna clear, you know, what is a stand of trees or whatever, that's got some other kind of ecological value that we're attempting to protect for the mere purposes of installing a septic leach field or a system, then we actually, we, we could have concerns about that. Because what we're talking about is, you've come to some kind of, you know, we've used a system of evaluating the parcel for the physical attributes it has, including whether it's wooded or not, right? And so, it's a question of disturbance under those conditions. Now, another state is the one that's issuing the permit, and it's up to the state on some level. But I think that the town also has the ability to say.
Not that.
Right. That you've got, or you've got to do it within, you know, we're gonna give you ov, overlapping building envelopes or whatever it is of this area, you need to figure out how you're gonna do it.
Yeah, just, I'm, I think my comment really was
Right.
Along the lines of, septic, you know, building lots, not building lots, sorry, rephrased myself, building envelopes are a matter of choice. I wanna be where the best view is. I wanna be where I can see Mount Monadnock. I wanna be down in the valley. Septic fields, leach fields, are often a question of, um, will it, will it, you know, when they dig the test pits, are you on ledge? You know, when you dig the test pits, are they gonna drain in the appropriate manner? And then suddenly, you find that you are, you, you, you want your leach field as short as possible away from where you are, because of the cost of doing it. But suddenly, you find that when they do the tests, you're six hundred feet away, or seven hundred feet away. And then you're outside of what would traditionally be considered the building envelope. As in, across the street, or up the hill, and pumping, and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
And then the other factor is, is that when the, the state now looks at it, not on a lot by lot basis, but on an area basis. So, if someone else has got one on the adjacent lot that's a little too close.
No, areas of separation.
They have to, you, you're get, gonna get told to move.
Right.
So, there are some other little factors in there. That's just my only comment.
Alright.
And, and then, then you have to decide whether or not the building envelope includes that leach field.
Well, it's a good example, because you talked about a question.
Yeah, really.
Okay.
Did today, as well.
So, do we wanna pick up, wait, is it, is that it?
This is the, is this one the less restrictive one? Is that what it says on the bottom there?
So, in the less restrictive, it's just a change of about like point two. Less restrictive means the building envelope is seventeen point five one. And, and the more restrictive, it means the building, or the developable area is seventeen point three eight, or something like that.
And that's just that muddy.
Yeah, there's, yeah, that muddy area. Do we give it half a development credit, or do we exclude it?
Right.
The green there.
Yeah. The way the regs.
Not the green area, the.
The middle of the green.
Yeah.
The.
The area that looks like a cell.
Do you wanna zap it with the laser?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This area is the difference. Yeah. The way that the language was written is saying that if it overlapped, it would not get any development credit, so.
So, can I ask a stupid question? Historically, under our current subdivision rules, it's forty-five acres. We define, I'm gonna get this wrong, but let's just say we define the minimum lot size as three acres. So, I could get fifteen parcels out of that, if I chose to just grid it up and make whatever way it is. Now, I'm coming down to seventeen acres, what are we calling it, net developable land, under this new scheme. How many parcels can I put of my seventeen acres? Because that's what the developer will ask. It's gonna come forward.
It depends, I mean, do we?
We're only at step one.
Step one.
Yeah, that's step one. So, the next step is, what's its road access? Let's assume this is a gravel, I mean, a paved, I paved class three. Um, I don't know if you have it, Isabel.
The next step is, has to do with roads.
Yeah.
Well, there are other attributes, yeah, basically to do with the proposed subdivision's location. You know, the sort of, we feel like the context.
So, we have, we have a base development density of one unit per every two acres. Do you have the regulations, if you look at page thirteen? So, assuming that this is a, uh, paved class three road, you would get, um, two times one, so you'd get two. So, it would be seventeen divided by two, you'd get about nine acres. All right, I'm sorry, nine units, nine lots, nine lots, we should say, because you could do two family.
As opposed to the other way.
As opposed to fifteen, but let me ask you this. Are you so sure you could get fifteen?
No.
Because by the time, by the time you put in the road and you need to meet the road standards and, you know.
With, with, with that question, there's a change. You might, you may have said, you know, I would say the developer might look at that and go, forty-five acres, I can get three plots out of it. They might have said three.
Right.
Or they might have gone fif, just that the regulations would have allowed fifteen, in the most bizarrest of senses, as long as they, they would all conform. Um, now, we're saying that you only have seventeen to play with, and I divide by two because of the road, and that's nine. Nine may be more than you can still do.
Yeah.
Right.
In practical terms.
Right.
But he would know now, because he can look at these maps.
Yeah.
And then we're also.
You know, right off the bat, he would know what, what elements would be removed from the developable area.
We're also getting rid of the minimum lot size, in a sense. We're saying, you can have nine lots up there, and you can do it the way that you want. I mean, there is a, a minimum, we say, should have a half an acre, I think is, is what it was set at. But you can have half acre lots, you could have two acre lots, you could have, um, anywhere between any combination there are. Um, and, so there's a little bit more flexibility. So, you could get them all up there in that white area clustered, and then you could get incentives.
Can I ask another question? What, what often happens in this town is what I call subdivision crawl or creep. So, we go in and we chop off a corner, and then we come back later, and we chop off another corner, and then we come back in three years, chop off another corner, and then we come back in, oh, it's boys, and pull a bit out of the middle. And sometimes, the, the DRB looks at it and goes, you know, if that had been proposed to us, where we are now, ten years ago.
We never would have said.
We would never have said yes.
That's right.
Okay, but we've got there because we've chipped and chipped and chipped around, we've gone around the circles. And here, we're looking at a kind of much more of a holistic approach, in terms of this is what's possible on that given land. So, that's, that's a serious plus.
Yes.
Um, or, I would imagine that's a plus. Because, you know, someone owns a, owns a piece of land, can understand where they're going with it, and also they have to plan for the whole thing. But, um, what, let's just say that now, I'm Mr. Clever Developer, and I, and I've got my nine units that are gonna go in there. But I wanna put all nine units within like a hundred yards of the road. Or, or two hundred yards of the road, or five hundred yards of the road. I wanna, I wanna put a little cluster, you know, a real cluster. How do I, how could I do that?
That's step four, isn't it?
I'm feeding it to you.
Yeah.
I was just, it's just, you know, I haven't read, I haven't, I haven't read all the way down.
No, that's.
Yeah. I would say, you know, to answer it in a sort of a philosophical way for a moment, Tim, the, 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 these regs are designed to induce that kind of response, which is, I wanna cluster, how do I go about doing that? And then, um, so, you know, there are cost reasons, as well as other reasons, why we think it would probably be preferable to be pretty close to the road, assuming all other things are equal. So, that might be, that might give them the best view, it might not. You know, if they're trying to capitalize on some other kind of asset that the land has, like a view, or overlooking a brook, or, you know, whatever it is, they may not choose to cluster them all tightly together and close to the road. But given what we're, we're trying to say about both the kind of identification of positive attributes, as well as the identification of hazards, I think what we're trying to get the developer to acknowledge is that the best way to approach lands in rural and rural residential is to assume that their most effective method is to cluster, and to then guarantee access to open space. Um, and so, that's, that's where you get at, you, you know, and, and we are addressing issues such as hazard and so forth, and even emergency vehicle access to some extent, by actually talking about varying density formula, you know, varying the density formula in response to say the, the, whether the road is, is surfaced or not, and that kind of stuff.
So, so, just to ask a question again, let's say you've got, I, I wanna put my, now I've got nine units.
Yep.
Apparently, according to step three. So, we go to step four, and Sue, you know, I'm, I'm sitting in there, and you say to me, um, it's a half acre minimum. So, nine times a half acres, four and a half acres. So, I could take four and a half acres of that and put my nine units on it, and that's my little cluster.
Yep.
And then, what happens to the other thirteen acres? That becomes conserved.
It becomes open space. It doesn't necessarily becomes conserved, so it's gonna.
But it's not developable.
It's, right.
Because you've put, because you've put the maximum number of lots on it that you can.
Say I come back in ten years, and everyone's forgotten.
Right.
And I wanna go, I wanna put another nine units at the back now. I put all these up the front, this is a fantastic development, look how successful it is, what a great subdivision that was. So, let's throw nine at the back.
It's gonna, well, then they.
No?
Wouldn't it be deed restricted?
It would be deed restricted. It would be, they would be handled in some way. You could have it conserved, you could create its own parcel and have a deed restrict, or, well, it could be deed restricted, or you could have a homeowners association or something that, somehow it would need to be restricted.
In essence, we're anticipating the subdivision regulations are going to control
He can't come back and do that.
The balance of the land.
Yes.
Let me just go, can we go back a step and get something clarified for Tim? And, and I want somebody else to do it, because I'm not sure I can quite say it the right way. So, if I'm the developer, working with my friend Mary, uh, on this parcel, the red land is definitely not touchable, because it has attributes that means it's not buildable.
You cannot have a building envelope in the red land.
I can have a.
You could have parcels that go into the red.
Right, exactly, that's the point I'm getting at.
Into the red.
Right. And so, the red land can be individually held.
Yes.
So, say, what I would do is, I would have nine units spread across four acres down near the road in that, see that sort of V-shaped, upside down V-shaped area there? Um, actually, I think there's already a house there. So, between that house and the, you know, the top of the V there, imagine that's four and a half acres, I put nine units in there, uh, three clusters of three, right? Um, and they each have a quarter of an acre or something, or it equals my. Half an acre, so they each get half an acre, it's all good. Then I assign each one of them a section of both the remaining white land and red land. Because the rest, we, once we've established a building envelope, we're really saying that's it for this parcel, right? So, it's not just the rest of the white land that's gonna end up being conserved, it's the white, the rest of the white land and the red land that's gonna be conserved. Is that correct?
Uh huh.
Yeah, but a parcel could have, each parcel could have white and red.
Yes.
As part of its development size.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I see this as being, excuse me, I think, I think the lawyers are gonna pull their hair out over it, and the people that draw lines on maps. I, I would say that, um, perhaps a better approach. Because what, what again might happen is this, is I come in, first of all, and I go, I only wanna put three in, the first three. So, I take out the one and a half acres, and the rest of it is left. But we have to deed the whole thing, as if we are, as if we are dealing with the entire package and the entire parcel on subdivision, even though it's further developable. Then in a few years, someone comes back and does another three or two. And then a few more years, someone comes back and does another two or three.
Well, it's a good, I mean, I think if you're not.
I think you really have gotta go, for, for example, in this case, I think you really have gotta go, for, for example, in this case, we're doing three seventeenths, because it's three out, or three nines out of this, and then the, that land goes, that land is then has an easement on it, the progress development.
I think you raise an interesting question and I wasn't thinking along that lines, like what if you get nine units out of this parcel, but you're only gonna construct three at this time? There needs to be a mechanism to basically say, this has got six more units.
Well, it may not, it may just be, that's my dream, and then I sell all three, you know, I have a family compound with three houses in it.
Yeah.
And that's allowed, then I sell my family compound to another family and they come in and say, well, actually, we'd like to put three more in.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a, it's a good question and there needs to be some way to preserve the fact that you can.
Right.
You still have six units, under this subdivision regulation scheme, you still have six units that you can build.
Potential.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so I think.
But that mean.
I think I need to look into that.
And having six units of potential, you've also removed three nines of the net area.
Right.
Well, wouldn't you, if you're subdividing it and you've got the scenario of the three and you're dividing that now, then that third of the property would be subdivided and the rest of it not.
Right, I mean, I think that's the other solution that I was gonna say, you would do your three units.
And you would deed restrict whatever needed to be deed restricted.
And then, and that could include breaking up the remaining forty something acres into thirds.
Because it's not a site plan, it's a subdivision.
Right.
I understand.
Right, and then someone can come along later and further subdivide by starting the process over.
With the remaining tract.
With the remaining, yes, exactly.
And if it's just one developer, then they would wanna do a phasing plan and.
But it'll still be the same amount of develop, I mean, not amount in terms of acres, but it'll be the same map that shows buildable and non-buildable.
Right, and you would identify a building envelope, you could either do a couple of things, you could identify a building envelope for three now, you could, and, and leave it and then wait for the applicant to come back and say, okay, so when I first did this, we were able to establish that the maximum number of units I was gonna be allowed was nine, I've only got three, let's talk about another six or another three or whatever, and you could say, okay. You'd pull the same base map, you'd have the same layer here presenting the same data. Then you could propose new subdivision.
Just a question of being sure that legally, when it comes to deed restrictions and chopping it up, that there's a process that the lawyers understand and can.
Right, so that's if you would.
The first, third, the first, has to be self-contained.
Yes.
With both its developable area and its deed restricted area, so that that would be complete.
Right, yeah, because you only have to do the three units and what needs to come with those three units in terms of open space, and the remaining area that could support a further six units could just be one piece.
Let me just, it would be one piece, let me just say this, you, you're assuming that, that we've gone now to the minimum. Gone, we've gone to the maximum cluster and therefore the minimum lot, half acre. Let's say I wanna, there's nothing that says they need to be uniform, I can have a seven acre lot, a two acre lot, a half acre lot, a nineteen acre lot.
Yes.
And, because that's the way I wanna do it.
Yep.
And that, therefore, you know, the math, which is take, take seventeen point four net acres and divide by two equals nine, therefore no longer holds up as a simple equation, it's a complex equation. That's all, I mean, I'm just saying it.
Yeah, I mean, it.
It's not, you know, the first three lots could all be three, could be one and a half acres or they could be sixteen acres or whatever.
What I'd say there is that actually that's surprisingly similar to a conventional approach. So imagine there isn't any of these rules and you decide that you're gonna go, you could either take a very long range view or a limited view, and so you've got your forty-five acres and you divide, and you decide that you wanna subdivide it into three. And so you, you know, you sell a mark, you sell a parcel nearest to the road because that's valuable, you keep the middle one and then you sell one at the top at the back for, for the least amount of money, but that also happens to be the biggest, once you're sold, you're out, you're done.
Now those three people come back independently.
Each one of them is gonna confront the limitations of the original lines on the map. So one of them comes back, the one at the top wants to come back and subdivide their land into three further parcels and the confrontation that they're gonna run into is they can't get a road to service each one of those three parcels, so maybe they can only do it into two parcels. And so it is, in other words, you know, if you think of it as a board game, your decision, you know, you roll a dice and you make a decision now and then that dictates the range of options that you get later on. And that's exactly the same here, if you decide to subdivide this into a two, a seven and a nine, then you have set up the terms for any subsequent subdivision, and that's just the way it goes.
So say I buy the nine.
You might get three, three acre out of it, or you might get one.
Yeah, depending on what the map is. Depending on where it is on the map and where it is in that parcel, then I have to then redo, I buy the nine, that nine acre lot, but then I wanna subdivide it, create a subdivision, but then I have to start all over again with this. And it's gonna prevent a lot of stuff, actually.
But that's exactly what happens now.
Yeah.
I mean, that is, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's like it definitely, people make decisions about subdividing land all the time.
Yes.
And what it does is close off opportunities for a different arrangement, because you've just made this arrangement and that means that's what you live with now, which closes off some opportunities as well as opening up others. And so, or you could just, to use a personal example, you could have eighteen acres and originally that eighteen acres could have been in a zoning district where the minimum parcel size was three acres, right? And so you've got nine possible parcels there. Then, six, sorry, six, they changed the zoning, the minimum parcel size to ten, all of a sudden you got two. No, you can't, you've got one, you've got one, actually, so you're done, right? So all of a sudden, you're sitting there minding your own business, far, far away with this piece of land of eighteen acres and then you get a letter in a mail going, oh, we changed the zoning, you weren't there, sorry about that. Now you don't have your investment opportunity, you have one pristine eighteen acre parcel. That's it, happens all the time, stuff happens.
Welcome to New York.
Right, it's just, that's, well, you know, that goes, that happens anyway, anyway and anywhere. So there's always, I mean, what I'd say is you can plan and you can make predictions about how you're gonna do it, but the day you go to do it is the day you have to do it, and whatever the rules are, are the rules. And so that happens now.
I guess, I guess to go, just to go back and look at it, there are just, there are some, you know, whether it's stage one, stage two, stage three, stage four, there are, you're, you're proposing that you have certain, some certain criteria. One of them is a minimum lot size, which is half.
Right.
So we can't cut this up anymore. Secondly, that there's a, there's a net response based on geological, topographical, hazard-based features, slopes and that kind of stuff, there's a reduction in terms of where you could have, couldn't build. And then there is a divisor of net area to allow for maximum development rather than minimum development, which is based on access, is that right? Roads?
And water sewer.
Water sewer, yeah.
Water.
And then there's incentives.
Right.
But the minimum lot size isn't the beginning part, because we're taking that away.
Which part?
Minimum lot size is not the first step.
No, I know it's not, but ultimately.
Which is what it is now.
I, 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 you have, I understand that, because that gets you to a cluster, because if you said, well, it's three acres of minimum, you don't, can't get a cluster, so. But there's still, there's still, you can't come down in the rural area to point one of an acre like you could in a residential district.
Yeah, no, you can't do that.
You can't do that, so you're saying point five is the minimum, so there's a, there's a, there's a lower and there's an upper, and then there's incentives in the middle of some sort, which I haven't read yet, step five, I guess, is that? Isn't that the five-step program for subdivisions?
We're, we're working on twelve.
It is, step five.
Don't you think twelve would be handy?
Well, I don't, no, I don't.
Has a nice, has a nice ring to it, don't you think? Twelve established.
In some ways, this may make land more developable than it is under the existing.
Um.
Under the existing three, three, three limit, limit.
Better able to be understood by someone who's contemplating the development at the outset.
Yeah, I doubt that, totally.
I think, yeah, I think, I think the worst kind of aspect to some extent of the, I mean, I think once you own the land and you know what the land can do, you have a better sense of its yield. So most people who spend any time thinking about this for these kinds of parcels are already aware that just because you've got a thirty acre parcel doesn't, and it's three acre minimum parcel size, doesn't mean to say that you're gonna get ten parcels out of it, you know, once you take into account the topographical features and stuff, they already know that. But the question is what to do with the information that we've got to move away from theoretical yield to an actual yield. And so we should be able to give more certainty to the applicant early on and have a clearer sense of, be able to give a clearer sense of what kind of development we would prefer to see and what kind of development we would prefer not to see. And so it goes back to the town plan in those ways, and that's why the context of the road and access to water sewer and so forth are actually important as.
Determinants.
As determinants, yeah, and so.
But anybody with a parcel can now go to these maps and see.
Right, and it's, you know, and.
That would be totally huge.
And I, and I, and I guess the single biggest takeaway is that we're really trying to encourage cluster development. For all sorts, you know, for lots of different reasons combined, they, they all stack up to make clustering preferable and.
But this does not require clustering either, so.
Right, right, you know, you could, you could divide this into three parcels alone and have one three-family dwelling and two, two-family dwellings on the, oh, you know, I guess, what do we, no, two-family dwellings, you could have three two-family dwellings.
On large parcels.
On large parcels.
And they could, you could cite them all in the developable area.
Right.
You know, the, the, the building envelope in the developable area, developable area, or you could cluster nine, nine lots.
That's, that's, you just raised the point, so it's, so if you were to put duplex, you can't put nine duplexes in here.
You can't, no.
No.
It's nine units or nine?
No, sorry, nine lots.
Nine lots, so then I could, then I could.
So you could do nine duplexes.
You could do nine duplexes.
You could do nine duplexes, you just can't join them with.
With a breezeway.
With a breezeway.
Well, maybe you can.
We've met that one before too.
But I would say you can.
You can, do breezeways?
I would say you can.
Yeah.
No, we, well, we.
Yeah, right, I think we all, I think we all agree on that, don't we, Tim?
We've written, we've written decisions that support that.
Right.
Well, yeah, so you could then get eighteen units, so it's lots, I mean, I need to go through and check the consistency, but the idea is lots. Vermont treats one and two-family homes.
As a protected class and that you, you could do one, a one or two family dwelling and there's.
Yeah, well, I just, I heard dwellings and lots mixed up in that conversation, so I suddenly thought, really?
Yeah, no, I do.
Right, so theoretically you could end up with eighteen households.
Eighteen units, yeah.
So you couldn't put a four unit?
No.
That's one building.
Not in the rural or.
Not in residential, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah?
Okay, one more slide.
I wanna start my.
We've got a lot, one patient.
Just do a map that some of you have in front of you. But this, one on the screen is a little different because it also has the confirmation, conservation easements, kind of in a purple hash, which I don't even know if you can see.
Is it really showing up?
No, not great.
Not really.
I know where they are.
Show us with the laser.
So this is an example of a parcel that is in conservation easement. So the gray is zero to five acres, the red parcels, this is, so these are the acres, but it's the developable land on those acres. So these parcels might be actually, in actuality, bigger than these sizes, but this is the developable land you can use. So the gray is zero to five, red is five to ten, orange is ten to fifteen, yellow is fifteen to twenty and then green is anything above twenty, I think the highest is only about a hundred and ninety-six.
That's it, only.
Only.
So it's one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight parcels, which equals fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four point five six nine acres.
Which is about two-thirds, I think, of the town.
Um.
Yeah.
There's a hundred and thirty-four parcels that are not at all developable, which equals thirteen, three hundred and seventeen point seven eight zero acres, just two point one five percent of the rural and residential parcels. And one point seven of that wasn't subdividable anyway, because it didn't reach the minimum size.
Under the existing zone, yeah. So we had looked at it, I think that in the rural district, there were fifty-three parcels.
I actually went over it again, so it's actually sixty in both, so there's a hundred and twenty parcels. So sixty in the rural that are under five point nine nine, and then sixty in rural residential that are under two point nine nine.
So those, those a hundred and twenty parcels couldn't be subdivided under the existing regulations.
Under the existing ones.
Right.
Right.
And under the new ones.
They still couldn't.
They still could not be, because they have too much steep slope or surface waters.
So, so by coincidence, all sixty lots in each district fell out the same way, under both sets of criteria? That's remarkable.
Old and new?
Yeah.
Old and new, that's remarkable.
No, well, those are just happened to be, I don't know if.
We're talking about two different categories, aren't we?
Yeah, because this is the ones I was just talking about, if you like, so you have the table and you can query it to select the ones you're looking for, so I selected all the rural parcels that were also under five point nine nine acres and had zero develop, developable acres.
Yeah.
Right, so that.
So there were sixty.
Sixty of those.
Sixty of those, sixty out of how many, do you know?
How many rural parcels?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'd have to look that up, but.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
So I, I think I'm confused.
Okay, so let's just think about the first category first, let's take rural, the minimum parcel size is currently.
One unit per three.
Is, is three acres, so what we've done is say.
Of those parcels, under the new mapping, there are sixty of them that are fully undevelopable.
Yes.
Because of slope.
Yes.
Or something or another.
Right.
Uh, there's, there's more, there's more than sixty, right?
There's a hundred and thirty-four in both sections.
In both rural and rural residential. That are undevelopable under the new scheme.
Right.
And they were developable or undevelopable before, they just weren't subdivitable, that's different.
They're not subdivitable, they're not, they're not.
They're not subdivitable.
They're not subdivitable because you, they are, so if it's, if the minimum is three acres in rural, you'd need six to be able to split it into two, right? So if you take five point nine and the smaller, you're never gonna be able to subdivide that parcel. There are sixty of those in rural and there are roughly sixty in rural residential, which is two point nine or less, because you couldn't subdivide those.
Anyway, yeah, so that leaves only.
I understand that, but, I get that part, but, so are you saying that, let's say I own one of those parcels, it's five point nine 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 nine, and I couldn't subdivide it, but I don't wanna subdivide it, I wanna build on it. But under the new scheme, because of topology, I can't build on it, it has no net buildable land, no net buildable area, so are we removing, are we removing the rights of somebody to build on a six acre lot?
No, I don't, I don't believe we are.
Do I misunderstand that?
This is the subdivision regulation, not, not just building. So if you had that six acre parcel, that's a different set of rules.
So you've got five point nine 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 nine.
Or a single house, it's a whole different thing.
But we're, we're, we're determining net buildable area by the new scheme, I don't care about site plan. We're saying that those lots, they're not subdivitable, great, but they have no net buildable area, is that what you're saying?
But it's an existing lot, so it's, it's pre-existing, you can.
So, okay, so if this is.
So it's not gonna come under these regulations?
Exactly.
Okay, I get it, sorry.
This is your five point nine.
Yeah, got it, I'm, I'm in the program. I got that.
But the other part is that it, it also shows us the yield for both of these, the whole Western part of Bratton World, that there's thirteen hundred roughly parcels and a huge amount of developable area within those parcels.
Yeah, right.
We were looking, of course, at the negative, but there's a huge positive here about development.
Yeah, there really aren't that many, there isn't that much land that's taken totally out of subdivision.
In other words, the impact of the change in the regulations, Tim, is minimal in terms of the actual impact. It doesn't take that much land out of development to achieve this.
Sounds like it makes it more developable.
I think that it might, I mean, yeah, I think it does increase the yield.
Yeah.
Because you have more flexibility to get your full yield.
I don't know whether that statistic falls out, isn't it, but I think it, I think it might.
But it does it in a better way.
We could calculate that.
I mean, if you just figure out net, net, net buildable and then divide by your two acres or whatever.
Yeah, we probably could.
Would it be possible to take that same example and. Would it be possible to take that same example and do the whole, you know, um, highway, road. And water, wastewater, and then incentive, so that you could take that same example and go through the whole step?
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be useful.
Yeah, we had another, um, perhaps our next meeting will have to be in our office, um, without Isabel sadly. Um, because we.
I think we'll make, she can make a special appearance.
Guest of care.
Guest of care.
You shouldn't have told us that.
What a schedule, what a schedule.
Special consultant to the plan.
I never took one before ten or after three, you get that?
What?
I never took one before ten or after three.
Yeah, mine only go at one and the, at one and one at six.
It's July, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays, so you have long weekends.
The database is actually really interesting because you can click on the parcel, like when you, when you're looking at the GIS database and the shapefiles, you can click on the parcel and then.
Yeah.
See exactly how it, how it's matched out and then see the buildable area.
Yeah, so the table is totally variable if you wanted to look at all parcels that were a certain acreage or look at all parcels that were, had a certain developable acreage or what have you.
I think it's more likely that an individual landowner is going to want to look at their parcel and take it all the way through so that.
Yeah, so you can perfectly understand.
Right.
All the things that were either limiting or allowing.
Yeah, that's what I'd want to do if it was mine.
Yeah. So you have maps for the classification of roadway?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So that was one that, um, you received.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, the more green one.
Mm-hmm.
So actually, and this is, this is a good map to look at because, um. Do you actually have this map? Isabel, in your PowerPoint presentation?
I made it.
I know you made it, it's very nice. Okay, so that dark tan area is the lands accessed by class four roads. And then the light tan area is the roads, uh, lands accessed by private roads. If you put those two areas together, it's remarkable how that corresponds with a really difficult to develop, you know, basically. Really steep, there's steep slope factors and a bunch of other stuff really prevalent in those areas.
So this is really just leading you to the common sense?
Mm-hmm. The other thing that should become apparent is that those brown parcels, they're really big. They are some of the biggest, some of the least accessible land is, you know, or, you know, by class four roads. They are relatively large parcels. So.
So the parcel that we've been looking at is, um, class one through three page four.
Okay.
Which is what I had assumed when I saw it two years ago.
Okay, so let's try and figure out which one it is.
And where is it in terms of the water?
On Marlborough Road.
I know, I mean, water and wastewater.
Um, it didn't have it. I think it does.
This one? Do you reckon it's that one?
Yep, I have it too.
Which one?
It's this one.
I think it's this one.
That one there?
Yep.
Yeah.
So just, uh.
I got a different picture.
Oh, oh, just west of the Mubble Home Park.
Oh, okay, I get it.
You got it, you got it.
I had to go there. So, yeah, the corner of Sunset Link and Ripley?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you might be right.
Yeah, it's Marlborough Road.
Yeah, there is a house up there.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, so this is great, Isabel, it's really good work.
Can I ask another stupid question? This, I think, not stupid, but, um, this, this starts to give, in my mind, and the list is not in this room. But this starts to give a different kind of.
Valuation.
Valuation to property. Because suddenly if I've got something which is all slopes, maybe it's not developable and therefore I shouldn't be paying too much taxes on it. But if I've got something that's very, very developable, we now have a set of geographic data that potentially changes the view of the grand list. Potentially, no, it's.
Yeah.
For lawyers.
No, no, it is, I mean, because.
It's what we're here for, really.
So, because you might, I might turn around and go, look, you know, this new subdivision regulation has just completely changed my view of my plot of land. I had some acres and I thought it was this, but now you're telling me it's not subdivitable. And that's, in essence, is a, I use this horrible word, that's a taking, because you've changed the way this works on me, whether I could have built there in the first place. And, and if, and in reducing my, in reducing the, my conceptual value of my land, I want my taxes down.
Yeah, but you have to prove that under the.
Lawyers.
Existence area.
Yes.
That wouldn't be any different.
That's, well, that's kind of like a model that needs to run here. I think this model is actually land development favorable.
Yeah.
On the face of it, and therefore it's a positive and there's not that much legal cause to, to go at it. But I'm not sure of that, that's a, that's a gut feeling or some position based on what I'm hearing.
I think that the other thing about that is, when you make, when you make a real estate purchase, you may have a, you may have a view to its development potential in the future. And that may be represented in the purchase price. So in other words, to take the example of, you know, if you buy thirty acres and it's currently three acre zoning, you might theoretically think. That you've got ten, potentially ten three-acre parcels on your hands here, and if you just sit on it long enough, you can sell off nine and keep one, or whatever.
If you didn't do your due diligence.
But then, the question is, is that no one's going to get taxed on that change in value until the change in, it's real estate, so it has to be real. So that you're not taxed until it actually happens.
That's right.
Um, and so.
Not quite true. Because it gets reassessed.
It does get reassessed.
And that happens all the time, it happened all the way up Bonneville when some lots went very expensive money, a surprise buy in time.
Yes.
And the assessors went up there and said, look, oh, by the way, that farm there just got subdivided into five pieces, it's sold to a very well-known person for an extra, extraordinary amount of money. And now your land's all more valuable, sorry.
But it's still undeveloped land, it's still taxed as undeveloped.
Undeveloped land, right. So it's the improvements in the land as two separate components. And so you're not going to pay taxes, increase taxes on, it's not a one-for-one relationship.
True.
Right? Just because the person over the road sold their place for double what it was, what you thought it was worth, and all of a sudden your taxes get readjusted up. If yours, if you've also got a large parcel of land that's predominantly undeveloped, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a one-for-one.
No, but as soon as you put that building lot, envelope in there, and you say, I'm doing something with it, undeveloped or not, they go to the parcel next door that just sold for a ton of money. Whether it was relevant or not, and reappraise you on that basis.
Yeah, I mean, what I'd say.
You could have.
But that's fair, is that fair enough?
And it's, he's.
You could fight it?
At that juncture.
You do, and guess what? You lose. You lose.
Yeah.
I have, I have personal experience of what they call grieving. As in, it really is grieving or grievancing.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you just kind of go, well, I'm sorry, you know, the guy next to me, he was an idiot, why did he pay so much? He paid far too much, he came from Nantucket, what do you expect?
Yeah, right. Somebody added three zeros and no one noticed.
They go, sorry, you paid it.
My wife was a man from Nantucket.
Yeah. It's okay, I mean, it's life.
Yeah, what I'd say is that, you know.
So it's interesting how this might.
Put it around the other way, now that you've just had your land reappraised, you can now sell it for more.
Conceivably.
Right, so if you don't like the answer, then you go, then actually, and you are deeply grieved, you can say, I've had enough. And you can sell it and pocket the, the windfall. Right?
Provided you can sell it.
Right.
Potential.
Right.
It's all potential.
Right, so.
This is very interesting, I like it, I have to say, on the face of it, I like it.
Good.
I'm glad you're, you're here to.
Yeah, it's great.
Poke, poke little stuff at it, because, I mean, you sit on the DRB and, and you can, I, I can see your mind there going through stuff and, and, um, it's, it's useful. And I think picking up particular parcels and playing it through makes, makes a.
That's an interesting thing.
Makes a huge difference, and, and doing it both the old way and the new way helps, helps me to visualize it totally.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be as comfortable without this work, so we're deeply appreciative of Isabel's struggles. The pain, the dataset.
Yeah, and I'm glad the town has the, the mapping stuff now, because they didn't always have this.
No, we built it for Isabel.
We did have it in the department.
Did you?
Yeah, we had.
There are, there is a chance.
On this nineteen eighty-six model computer.
It's just becoming more useful.
Yeah, we can actually, and we have somebody who can use it to a full extent, so it's really great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Thank you, Isabel.
Can I ask one other thing? I don't know, I didn't see it in here.
Yep.
But what, there, there was, there has been some talk about in the, in, um, and you just alluded to it slightly. In the kind of conservation thinking, is that, so I want to go into, you know, a nice, beautiful wooded lot A, and I want to cut ten acres of trees down. You know, chop, 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 and then I'm, and, and I don't really care too much about conserving it. And I want to put my palace in the middle of that, my mansion in the middle of that.
Yep.
And the various points in time, I mean, you said something earlier about, you know, so if the best place for the leach field is in the trees and you've got to cut the trees down to get your leach field in there, is that? Not so much right or wrong, but, you know, what's, how's that work? So is there any quid pro quos in this thing?
I think, I think you're getting at, um.
Is it here?
What Sue has, but I don't think we're quite there yet under, um, minimize on page fifteen, minimize impact to natural and cultural features. Um.
Fifteen C.
Three, significant trees, blah, blah, blah. But there's not. Um, it's just, it's not really a regulation, there's no, um, kind of teeth to it, it's just a recommendation.
Right.
So I'm not sure that we're actually there yet, like a phrase.
Uh, C.
Three, page fifteen.
Page fifteen.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah, it's just kind of a statement. So you, you wanting to frame it in.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that, I, I don't know the answers to this, but there has been some conversations. If I, I mean, let's just say, for every two trees I cut down, I've got to plant one. You know, I mean, I don't know whether that's the right math.
Well.
Or, or for every, you know, if I, if I want to clear something which somebody's considering to be sensitive, I mean, you, you have to clear a lot. I mean, you have to clear the space, I mean, it's not unreasonable that you might clear two acres, let's say. But is it necessary to clear ten? So you can say, I don't, I don't know how you start to control this or even think about controlling it.
We had this conversation.
You have a, you have a tree inventory on your parcel, and you identify every tree over a certain diameter. And the ones that you cut, you have to compensate for with the planting of X number of trees at this width on the remainder of the property.
Yeah.
That's what's typically done.
We had this conversation, Tim, too, where we wanted to, we had first proposed the limits of clearing to be the building envelope.
Yep.
So you couldn't clear outside the building envelope. And we discussed that a lot, there were a lot of differing opinions on the commission. Because it's not uncommon for people to want to hay and, you know, clear off a view or that kind of thing. So it really forced us to go back and say, well, what, what is our reason for wanting to limit clearing? For me, and I think for the case in the town plan, it's erosion and sedimentation control and steep slopes and that kind of thing. And we felt that we had good protection of the steep slopes based on this modeling and where you're going to cite the building envelope, um, and that kind of thing. Putting in stream buffers was going to help with some of that erosion and, um, sedimentation control and that kind of thing. So I think we didn't feel like we were quite at the case of why should you limit clearing? Uh, some states have done it, but it usually has to do with water quality impacts, so Chesapeake Bay, um, you know, we haven't really gone through and said. This stand of forest or, you know, this area is really productive and therefore, you know, we want to be careful with it and manage it properly. So that's why we pulled back from.
Yeah, and I think even the.
You know, going at it.
I think you need, you know, to take the merit, you know, the Chesapeake Bay example, you need some sort of scientific argument about. The relationship between clearing and water quality and those kinds of things, and you need to have it at such a scale. Um, that, you know, that the commitment is kind of obvious, as it were.
I think my, the reason for me mentioning it or thinking about it is that there have been storm events that we consider are worse in the two thousands than they would have been historically. Because we've had more radical clearing in the higher reaches of the, of the basins. And some of that's outside of the scope of Brattleboro for sure, because it goes to either Guilford, Thomasville, Marlborough and so on and so on, other towns. But, you know, if you cut, clear cut fifty acres and someplace at the top, then the water comes down quicker.
Yes.
We're at the bottom.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
That's, that was the only, you know, and it, really, it's more original than perhaps subdivision ordinance, but, but.
But I think there is also this, uh, there's a difference between, um. What a forest management plan here would call for and outright prohibitions on clear filling. So the typical scenario with larger parcels in rural areas here is that, um, there'll be, you know, a parcel over twenty-seven acres and part of it will be in current use. Which basically often means that it's wooded lands and it's not managed in any, you know, overt way, that it's just let go. And, but there is, you're required to have a forestry plan and you're required to have that renewed every, I can't remember what the interval was, I think it might be ten years. And you're required to do something about it. So you'll often see people actually hiring loggers or other, you know, people to, to, to clear some valuable woods. Valuable wood from their lands to conform to the requirements of their.
Current use.
Current use plan, which is not the same thing as a conservation plan. So in other words, they'll take out the trees that have got some marketable value because that, that conforms to meeting their requirements of using their land. Uh, in that, you know, in a kind of a quasi-agricultural way, right? But we might, what we're doing actually is sort of at odds with that, because what we're doing is identifying potentially those same trees of a certain girth and larger as trees that we want to preserve. And they would be exactly the same ones of value that they would want to cut down, um, to meet their plan requirements, because that's what they can sell. Um, and typically what happens is, in reality, it's pretty common that the logger will do it. They'll come and clear, you know, for a week and pull out three truckloads of logs, and they won't charge you anything, and you won't pay them anything. Because the value of the wood that they get out of the logs covers the cost of going to get them. So then they mill the logs and turn it into, you know, some kind of valued wood for construction or something, and, you know, you don't pay and they don't, you know what I'm saying? So that no money actually changes hands to some extent. If it's done well, I mean, if it, if it works out nicely, that's how it plays out, but there's sort of a problem that we've got here.
And it's just forestry management.
It's just forestry management. And the principles behind the forestry management are to do with maintaining kind of a working forest, if you like, which is different from achieving certain kinds of conservation goals. Although I don't think that necessarily at opposite purposes. In other words, I'm sure you'd get the local forester saying, this is the way. This is the way to maintain the health of the forest, all right?
But I, I just think this whole set of elements under, um, lot configuration and design. I think we should all look at because they're really just recommendations and we should decide whether we want to.
Okay.
Look at them more strongly.
Did you, did you have a view, sir? Did you?
Um, so that's section three point three in its entirety.
Or just in its entirety, or just?
Section three point three in its entirety.
Okay.
Like whether or not even just to put incentives if you don't want to put in restrictions.
I know that there's some, um. Some language in here that, that kind of draws it down, like to the extent possible and that, I mean, I tried to write it in Shao. So that, the, the stronger Shao language, so that, um, it is kind of the direction. But obviously, you're not going to be able to comply with each of these necessarily, so I think it was to give a little. So I think it was to give a little flexibility so that it gives direction to the developer that says, these are the things that are important to us. And here's how we think you should cite the building envelopes and lot lines. But there's always going to be special circumstances on the site.
Yeah, I just want to think about that, see if I can gather my thoughts.
I don't think, actually, the more I think about it, I don't think that necessarily the forestry plan still would be in conflict with what we're trying to do. I mean, I think it might get down to sort of really techy stuff about which trees we'd want to identify as, whatever we call them, good ones.
I mean, we're really just talking about wholesale clearing.
I've seen some pretty, I've seen some pretty rough work that, um, you know, has been done in the name of, you know, meeting the forestry plan for a current use, I can tell you that.
It goes in a fifty acre swath sometimes.
Yeah, it's pretty rough. I mean, it, it can, it can have a pretty significant impact in the, on the woodlands, that's for sure. I mean, this, I mean, not, not on Brattle, I have to say not on Brattleboro, but some, some of the stuff I've seen has been pretty like, um, rough. Just the, and then there's the question of the impact of the road, you know, the forestry road and all that kind of stuff as well.
I mean, I think that this, this section three point three, I think, is important. So I think spending some time thinking about it would be really good. It's not something that exists in the existing subdivision regulations to this extent.
Right.
And so for me, it's like, it's actually the attempt for the developer and either staff in preliminary discussions or the developer and the DRB to really get a good design of the subdivision. So I think it's a really important section in terms of the quality.
So I have a question for you, Sue. Do you think that this gives you the specificity that the DRB's been asking for and also allows you to have the flexibility that you need?
Listen, I haven't, I haven't read the whole thing. I got, I think I told Sue I got the first eight pages and then I said, is it worth coming to the meeting tonight? And she said, yes.
And that's kind of how it went.
And sort of.
And was it?
Yeah.
Good.
Um, I'd like to read the rest of it. I think that the process, certainly certain sections at the beginning is definitely improved. I'm not sure about the rest of it yet. I, I like this contact or the, the net determining, uh, what do we call it? Net developable areas or not, and, and giving flexibility that's not limited to lot, minimum lot sizes. I think that's, I think that's, that's good. I don't know about the rest of it. I think some of the things that we come up on, under, in subdivision is, you know, it's, it's the thorny things of, you know, roads, grades, uh, stormwater management.
Right.
That type of stuff. And it's, it's invariably where we have issues. It's where someone's trying to squeeze something in where it shouldn't be squeezed in. But that's, and, and in terms of technical standards, we've been deferring to the state for quite some time now on where, where the applicant has said, you know, I don't want to put in a road that's forty feet wide or twenty-four feet wide. And the state requires eighteen, so we say, go with the state standard, you know? That type of, I mean, we, where we've had developments of that nature, we've been not sticking solely to the town standards anyway. I think, I think it's going to have flexibility. I think in some areas, we, we might, this might have to tighten up. Because I don't want to, I don't want, I mean, let, you know, the word, the use of the word shall is good. There, there's, there's other areas that I have read already that where it's, I think almost is too open, a little too loose still. But my yellow highlighter is going to go through those and
Yeah.
send them in as comments.
So Sue, our charge is to read this thoroughly for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so. Um, you know, if you have any thoughts, send it my way in between now and then.
Great.
Thank you, Isabel.
Yes, thank you.
So do we want to go to zoning or are we fine?
Is it worth saying, zoning rewrite a less than half of them?
I don't think we necess, you know, just to say that the municipal, the municipal planning grant, um, application season is open. And we are, the office is putting together a grant application for the municipal planning grant. The effective maximum that we could get is twenty thousand dollars if we match it with six. Is that correct? If I got the numbers right?
No, I think it's twenty, twenty-six. Yes, we can get twenty thousand from them if we match it with six of our own.
Right.
Yes.
So that's what we're going to go for. Um, and, um, we luckily have the resources to make the match. So, which is not like us.
Don't you have, excuse me, did you have substantial resources? I thought that, I thought it was thirty thousand.
We do. And so we would take six from that to, um, leverage the twenty. So that would give us twenty-six. And then we've got.
Twenty-four thousand dollar party.
Oh, no, Tim, we have twenty-four thousand dollars for serious work from another council.
If we're successful.
If we were successful, assuming, assuming that we are successful. The zoning rewrite, we think conforms well to the priorities that the state has produced this year for, you know, reviewing the grants against. And so we're working, basically the office is working on putting together an application, so.
You guys are good grant writers.
Thank you.
In tandem with that, though, the thirty thousand that we did receive from the select board needs to be used in this fiscal year. So that's why RFP shows up on there because we actually have to get moving with that to have it
Right.
spent by June thirty, twenty fourteen.
So try and imagine two grants going at the same time, two, two sub projects of the zoning ordinance rewrite. One grant would be, one would be funded by the grant from the municipal planning grant, assuming that we get it. That would be one team of consultants or an individual consultant to do one chunk of work on the zoning ordinance. And then that remaining twenty-four thousand dollars from the thirty would be devoted towards another zone, another consultant or consultants. Uh, or the same one potentially. And that would be a different aspect of the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Have you incorporated yourself into any business yet?
I think you need to hear.
I think we'll get the forms on.
Next week.
Yeah, yeah, we can fill out the forms. So, um, so yeah, so that's basically the plan. One version would be, yeah, it would be two different consultants and the other version would be one, but paid from two different pots of money. The thinking behind two different ones is in fact to do more with the technical nature of the work. So in our experience, we're looking for a consultant that's got lots of background in Vermont towns, rewriting the zoning ordinance in general, and some familiarity with design guidelines and that kind of material would be useful. The other part of the zoning ordinance that obviously needs to be worked on is the, um, the, the flood hazard section in particular, um, including fluvial erosion hazard. And there we will be looking for a different set of skills. And we don't necessarily think we're going to get all those skills in the one person or even the one firm. So that's why we're thinking that it's going to be on two different levels.
Like public meetings, presentations and the like?
And a lot of technical, I think what we are interested in seeing is, you know, going back to the state and looking at their model language and looking at how, similar to what we've done tonight, actually model the model language, if that makes sense, and see how it would work in Brattleboro. And whether that's, whether that language is appropriate or whether there are some amendments would be required or whatever. And I think what we're trying to do is, um, work on an approach that, um, was focused on the circumstances as, as we find them in Brattleboro.
I know some consultants who might do that.
Okay. Okay, that'd be good. Okay, we just, it's pretty techy compared, of a, of a very specific kind. So, um, we, you know, the other possibility that it could be a consortium kind of approach. So, you know, an environmental engineer along with a planner or that, that combination of, of, uh, backgrounds rather than just a straight planner.
So I think we saw the two kind of projects as one, kind of the zoning districts and just general organization. The other being more of the environmental aspects, level impact development, you know, some of the, um.
So taking all the information from the plan
Right.
and then taking all the information from that seminar we had in Mar, in April, and all that stuff together.
Right.
Yep.
So that's the idea. So that's that item pretty much in a nutshell.
So I would say, I mean, you know, at some point in the near future, there will be an RFP going out at least on the twenty-four thousand that we, you know, for the first, that we know we have money for.
Right.
Do you have enough time to do it?
Enough time? Is that what you said?
You mean enough time to run both grants at the same time?
No, no, just, just that if you have to, if you have a grant, uh, uh, sorry, and, um, what's the word? An apportionment or, I can't think of the right word.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
To finish this.
If we have an appropriation.
An appropri, you have a, you have a select appropriation of thirty thousand dollars, of which you're going to sideline six, but you've got twenty-four thousand you've got to spend by next July. I mean, you have, yeah.
You have to get going.
You have to get going.
Yeah.
I, I, because I, I know the, unless, of course, you get, get so far and then the twenty-four thousand runs out and you haven't got a new set of documents that are complete, but you have a good body of work to go on. Because the process of getting it, the kind of zoning changes that I think are, no, I don't think, I'll just say are required, not, I don't think, are significant.
Yeah.
It's, it, it is, in the opinion of the select board and the DRB, a start from scratch.
Yeah. We're concerned about the enormity of the project.
It's huge.
It's huge. And so most people, when you, most other professionals and so forth, when we say, oh, we're going to rewrite the zoning ordinance, kind of chuckle and go, the whole thing?
Yeah.
And, um, so, and then walk away. Um, so.
Well, if you just look at what's happened, say, historically with North End five, six and seven, or whatever it was, how long that took or didn't take to achieve some of it and not all of it.
Right.
Or even the amount of time that went into, um, rural, rural commercial.
Rural commercial.
That was a substantial amount of time in terms of the process of, of going through. It, it, it could take, on that basis, it would take years. And chipping away at the old.
That's why there's a consultant.
That's what the concept is.
No, that, you're right. I think that's where a consultant is particularly handy because it's not by, by committee.
And it sets the clock ticking in a way where everyone realizes that when this team of people go, so does the, you know, so, so you, let's get it done. You know, there's that kind of, because there's an end date that's, that's established and known. And I think that's beneficial just to keep some heat going and the project kind of going.
Yeah.
And I think.
But I think, I think I was encouraging you to go, not so much to go fast, to go for it now.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you're gonna, the clock's gonna run out.
Yeah, that's what we.
Yeah.
And, and that's not to say that the select board, if you don't spend that money, won't reappropriate it in a future year because I think they will. And I think that current chair of the select board is clearly aware of it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't think you'll find objection there. Um, and he's chair for, sorry, he's on the board for at least one more year.
Yeah. I, I mean, we prefer to get it spent and get it done. I mean, um, the question then becomes, you know, what, what is the material that we're left with at the end of the consultant phase for both those projects? And how, you know, how close is it to, um, draft language? You know, and we've, you know, so, so obviously we want, we want to get it as close to draft language as we can, as we can manage. But we also think that another critical part here is, um, is coming up with a meaningful public engagement process because this is such a substantial change that the way we handle a public outreach process is going to have a critical effect on, on the pro, the speed of the proceedings once we get through adoption.
At least to go fast too.
Yes, that's.
Because the, not to be disparaging in any sense, but the town plan seemed to take a decade when, I mean, I know it wasn't a decade, but it took a long time. And the pub, the public disengages at some point.
Right.
Because it's just, it's gone on too long and you just go, you know, whatever. And this, I think the zoning rewrite just needs to get a, a rocket under it.
Yep.
Or steam, real steam, and go and get done. And, and I think personally, it can be quite radical. I mean, I've looked at other towns in Vermont's zoning codes and they're very different from what we.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
There are certain other examples out there that, I'm not suggesting that we
Do it.
go those routes.
Right.
There are clearly different approaches that could be taken.
Yep. Yep. So where are you going to get going on that stuff?
Okay, so that's that item in a nutshell. Is there any other business?
I just would like, um, an update on, um, maybe, it's already happened, I don't know, an update on the select board public hearing on the food truck zoning amendments? Did that happen?
It did happen. Um, I could be wrong, but I think that there was no public, you know, there was, it, it went swiftly.
I was there.
She, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I realized you were there.
It's adopted.
It's adopted. It was, it was, there was no public comment.
August sixth happened.
Yep. And then passed unanimously at the select board. So, that, so.
And I loved our public hearing with all that public hearing. That was there. It was great.
It was good.
That was, yeah, it was excellent.
And then, uh, so is that, did that?
That was all.
Yep.
Just update on that.
Did we want to mention this, Sue?
I don't even.
I didn't even read it until, that's FERC notification.
Okay.
And this is a net meter.
Okay. So we have before us, um, an application for a, um.
Thanks, Tim.
See you, Tim.
Uh, a solar panel array on South Street, I believe it's South Street. Up to between, um, ten kilowatts and a hundred and fifty kilowatts. And we have requested more information from the applicant. This is one of those process, processes where we have very limited ability to comment. Um, and, um, you may remember some time ago, uh, another person came forward with this kind of project and, um, we discussed it briefly here and presented information to the select board for them as to whether they, so that they could arrive at a decision as to whether they were going to comment or not to the public service board. And they elected not to comment, I believe. So the things that we were looking at, um, were, um, adequate notification to the neighbors, to the abadas, um, um, adequate shielding of the, of the panels, um, for hazards, you know, glare and other related hazards and so forth. And what we need from the applicant, which we don't yet have, is a, is a site plan basically showing, um, where the panels are going to be erected and what size they are going to be. We have information about what type of panels they are and how much power they'll generate, but not actually what the, um, visible and aesthetic impact of the project would be. We have a narrative saying that the impact would be, um, minimal. So, um.
That's the, everything's hunky dory there.
Yeah, pretty much. I like it. Um, and then the way this works is that, um, because this person has already basically established a contract with Green Mountain Power, Green Mountain Power has no issues with them doing it. And so from a public service board standpoint, that's the one thing that they want to see in place. And basically unless we, um, post concerns to the public service board, it's an automatic approval on the basis that they see Green Mountain Power is willing to buy the power.
So you're going to write a letter asking them to first site a plan?
We have asked the applicants to provide us with more information. When we get that, um, I'm happy to circulate it.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a.
It's a couple of days.
It's a couple of days. I don't know if we've seen it.
We need to get a letter to the public service board.
Right. So Brian.
So that's a letter and then James needs to sign it?
Um, yeah, or I could probably sign it on James's behalf. I'll have to sign it. Um, so.
So.
That's about it.
Any other business?
No.
I move we adjourn.
Hang on like a second?
That's great.
All, shall we vote on that? All in favor?
We have a great majority. Yes, pass.
Actually, you don't even.
You can't even do that. You're not a core.
You can't even, yeah, right. I don't even know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.